Just a heads up, I'm gonna pull everything on the consent today just to make it entertaining.
All right.
Boo.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome. No, I was looking at one and it's peg fee, so I'm good. Y'all just heads up. I'm not gonna worry about anything.
We are live. Welcome everyone to our city council agenda regular meeting on September the 15th, 2020. We are calling the meeting to order. We all city council members are present, so of course that means we have a quorum. And today we're gonna start off with a prayer from our chaplain Ralph Dawkins. So Ralph, would you like to go ahead and lead us in prayer this morning?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Good morning, everyone. Let's pray for just a minute if we could. Father, in the name of Jesus, we pray for those that are in authority over this city, and I pray and I lift up the mayor, her staff and assistants, city council, the managers, and every person that is involved with running our city. We thank you and we bless you and we honor you that unity will take place in this meeting. You said in your word, God, that you, that our world is formed by our words. And so today, I use my words to say that this will be a good meeting and that all the agenda will be fulfilled, goals will be met, and plans will be established. I speak over this city and I call us blessed. I speak over our mayor and city council and the members, and I say that you will fill them with all wisdom, knowledge, discernment, and direction to fulfill their goals for this meeting today. I speak that for our peace, our police officers, our chief and fire, and all the first responders. And I speak that you will give them all the resources that they need to do their job well. Father, today I confess that this is the day that the Lord has made, and I will rejoice and I will be glad in it. And so I pray that you will keep them all in the same accord, let there be unity and agreement in this meeting. And for these things, I pray your blessings will be upon our city council and all those who are in this meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen and amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ralph. That was absolutely a beautiful way to start this morning's meeting. Thank you for those comments, that wonderful prayer.
Thank you.
We will move into item three, special instructions. All members of the public council and staff should begin speaking by stating their full name and SMD slash address, their SMD position or role within the city. We will move into public comment. We receive no public comment as it relates to the agenda, but we do have proclamations this morning, so I will start with those. First of all, a recognition concerning the United Way of the Concho Valley. Game changers, hand raisers. The mission of the United Way of the Concho Valley is to provide the means by which a cross-section of our community may join in a community-wide effort to provide and deliver health and human service programs which address current community needs in a collective and collaborative manner. In 2019, more than 50,000 local Concho Valley residents benefited from the United Way of the Concho Valley contributions through service agencies that provide emergency food and shelter, day and after-school programs for children, mental health services, substance abuse treatment and prevention, services for victims of child abuse and domestic violence, and many other social services. The objective of the United Way of the Concho Valley is to assist in expansion or the development of new service programs, promote preventive activities, and foster cooperation among local, state, and national agencies serving the community. In the face of COVID-19, the United Way is ready to assist all individuals with whatever needs may arise in the city of San Angelo. The city of San Angelo supports the United Way of the Concho Valley, and we ask that you do the same. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize and applaud the United Way of the Concho Valley for its determination to make a difference in our community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the city of San Angelo to be affixed this 15th day of September, 2020. Our next proclamation is as follows. National Hispanic Heritage Month originated in 1968 as a celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Week with a proclamation by President Lyndon B. Johnson. In 1988, Congress amended the original public law creating National Hispanic Heritage Month. President George H.W. Bush issued the first proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month on September 14, 1989. The annual proclamation designates the month as a 31-day period beginning September 15 and ending on October the 15. This month-long celebration recognizes the valuable contributions made by citizens of Hispanic descent to all aspects of American life, including leadership in business, civil service, culture, education, military, ranching, and religion. Hispanic Heritage Month provides a special opportunity for teachers, schools, as well as public and private organizations to focus on the many Hispanic Americans whose lives have shaped our common history and heritage. During Hispanic Heritage Month and throughout the year, it is imperative to embrace our diverse histories so that all children can see themselves in our city and nation's past and know that they have a crucial role to play in its future. The theme of this year's observance is Hispanics, be proud of your past and embrace the future. The greatness of America can be measured by the collective contributions of its citizens, past and present, and our future will be measured by our ability to uphold and instill into others our most valuable assets, our shared culture, history, knowledge, and sense of community. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2020, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in San Angelo, Texas, and encourage our citizen to learn more about the history and rich contributions to our society by Hispanic and Latino Americans. In witness whereof, I have unto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the city of San Angelo to be affixed this 15th day of September, 2020. Next proclamation. The railroad museum of San Angelo is a leader in supporting highway rail grade crossing and pedestrian safety programs in partnership with Operation Lifesaver. Highway grade crossing crashes during 2019 resulted in 31 persons killed and another 123 injured in the state of Texas. And pedestrian railroad trespasses incidents on railroad property during 2019 resulted in 44 persons killed and another 56 injured in the state of Texas. Highway grade crossing crashes are more severe than highway collisions and are more likely to result in death and injury. And collisions between trains and motor vehicles on pedestrians can be prevented by increased public awareness of the dangers at crossings and around railroad property and the appropriate safety laws. Operation Lifesaver is a foremost public information and education program dedicated to preventing highway rail grade crossing crashes and pedestrian railroad trespass incidents. September 21 through the 27th of 2020 and throughout the year, all citizens are encouraged to observe added caution motorists and pedestrians near tracks or trains. This important observance should lead to greater safety awareness and a reduction in highway rail grade crossings, crossings, crashes, and pedestrian railroad incidents. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September 21 through September 27, 2020, as Rail Safety Week and encourage all citizens to participate in activities to reduce crossing crashes and pedestrian railroad trespass incidents throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have unto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the city of San Angelo to be affixed this 15th day of September, 2020. Next proclamation. House Bill 1937 designated September 11 of every year as Texas First Responders Day to honor and commemorate individuals who have made profound commitments while performing their duties as peace officers, firefighters, emergency medical first responders, and dispatchers. Recently, Governor Abbott thanked doctors, nurses, first responders, and all the healthcare professionals who are, quote, "putting their lives on the line every day," end of quote, "helping people in ways that are incomprehensible to most of us." As he stated, "We need to let them know the depth of our gratitude for what they have done to step up and be the true first responders in this healthcare pandemic." First Responders Day honors all firefighters, police officers, EMTs, and all those who are the first on the scene in stressful situations, those heroic men and women who make it their business to take immediate action when disaster strikes. Texas First Responders Day honors the bravery, courage, and determination of Texas that assists others in emergencies. First responders are dedicated to protecting our communities and deserve to be recognized for the sacrifices they have made to keep each of us safe. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September 15, 2020, as First Responders Day. In the city of San Angelo, call upon all citizens to honor and appreciate our first responders and their willingness to provide safe and secure environments for our community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the city of San Angelo to be affixed this 15th day of September, 2020. Okay, I think that concludes the proclamations and the recognations for today's meeting. So with that, we will now move into item five, which is a statutory required in-person public hearings on proposed budget and tax rate. A, discussion and consideration of matters related to the fiscal 2020-2021 operating budget, including first public hearing and introduction of an ordinance of the city of San Angelo approving and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by 1,538,327 or a 3.90% increase. And of that amount, 441,574 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll. Two, conduct a separate vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget and place the adoption of this tax rate on the agenda for the September 29, 2020 regular meeting of the city council as an action item. That presentation will be made by Tina Dersky. And B, introduction of an ordinance levying property taxes for the city of San Angelo for the 2020 tax year. A public hearing and first reading of an ordinance fixing and leveling, leveling add-valorm taxes for the current tax year for use and support of the municipal government of the city of San Angelo, Texas, for the 2020-2021 budget year, providing for the assessment and collection thereof, providing when the tax shall become due, providing when the tax shall become delinquent, providing for exemptions, providing for severability, providing for publication on the city-operated website, and providing for an effective date. Again, presentation by Finance Director Tina Dersky. With that, we are going into Tina Dersky's presentation as just read.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. As you know, we've already reviewed the draft budget with you and received direction on what to include in this year's final proposed budget. And so this is, again, as you said, the first public hearing and introduction of that ordinance to adopt the fiscal year 2021 budget. And we will also need to conduct a separate record vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase. With the budget ordinance as directed by council, we have included health insurance, the increase for employees, we've included police body cameras, additional body cameras for the police department, which also included software for the redaction. And then, of course, you approved the COPS grant with the local match amount that is being funded by the general fund. This is all information you've seen before, Mayor and city council, but we go through it with you every year just to remind you of what's included in the budget ordinance. It authorizes the employee compensation schedules and it provides for the general appropriation of funds or reserves under the city council, the authority to transfer appropriations budgeted, ratifying transfers of appropriations occurring in the fiscal year 2021 and amending that budget ordinance accordingly. It provides for a lapse of all unencumbered or unobligated funds for the prior fiscal year and for carryover of all appropriations encumbered, obligated, or restrictive funds. It reserves unto the city council, the power only is permitted by law to amend or make changes in the budget for municipal purposes. It provides authority for the city manager or his designate to make certain adjustments from time to time in or between budgeted allocations, and it authorizes the city manager or his designate to apply for and accept certain grants and execute any related documents, and of course, it provides for the filing of our budget. So again, Mayor, with that, this is the first public hearing and introduction of the ordinance adopting the 2021 budget. And at this time is when we would call for any public comments.
All right. We have set up in the McNeese Convention Center with Teresa James there to accept any public comment at this point in time.
Mayor, we're not seeing anyone here for public comment.
I believe that Julia said a citizen had logged on for public comment. Okay, so with that, there is, we have no public comment relative to this current budget and the tax levy attached to it. So at this point, then, I guess we go city council member by city council member. The record vote is for item B or item two on item A? Okay, so we are going to do, conduct a separate vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget and place the adoption of this tax on the agenda for the September 29, 2020 regular meeting of the city council as an action item. So I am going to start with, it would be Billy Dewett first.
Madam Mayor, Billy Dewett, Single Member District Six. I vote yes.
Thank you. Lane Carter.
Lane Carter, SMD Five, I vote yes.
Tom Thompson.
Tom Thompson, Single Member District Two, I vote yes.
Lucy Gonzalez.
Lucy Gonzalez, Single Member District Four, I vote yes.
Harry Thomas.
Harry Thomas, Single Member District Three, I vote yes.
Tommy Hebert.
Tommy Hebert, Single Member District One, I vote yes.
Brenda Gunter, Mayor, I vote yes. All right, I will now need a motion from council on 5A1, which is the first public hearing and introduction of an ordinance of the city of San Angelo approving and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by 1,538,327 or a 3.9% increase, and of that amount, 441,574 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll. May I have a motion?
This is Lane Carter, SMD Five, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lane. Do I have a second?
Lucy Gonzalez, Single Member District Four, second that motion.
Thank you, Lucy. With that, we will take a vote. Do I need individual vote? All right. All in favor, please say aye. None opposed? So item five-two passes seven-zero. All right, with that, we will now move into the consent agenda. Wait, sorry, no. We now need a motion for 5B.
Mayor, this is Tommy Hebert, Single Member District One. I move we approve item 5B as presented.
Do I have a second?
Billy Dewett, Single Member District Six, I second the motion.
With a second, we will now take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Motion passes seven-zero. Tina, I think you're trying to speak.
Yes, ma'am. I believe we had some statutory language in the slides that had to be read.
I'll go back and read 5B. 5B says introduction of an ordinance leveling property taxes for the city of San Angelo for the 2020 tax year. Public hearing and first reading of an ordinance fixing and leveling add-valorm taxes for the current tax year for use and support of the municipal government of the city of San Angelo, Texas, for the 2020-2021 budget year, providing for the assessment and collection thereof, providing when the tax shall become due, providing when the tax shall become delinquent, providing for exemptions, providing for severability, providing for publication on the city-operated website, and providing for an effective date. With that, I'm going to ask for that motion to be made again.
All right, Mayor.
Yes.
That has some statutory language required by the state. It's kind of a formality, but we have to read it in that manner. We'll go to that slide now. We need members to make that.
Mayor, this is Tommy Hebert. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.7760 per $100 valuation, which is effectively a 2.73% increase in the tax rate.
And a second.
Madam Mayor, Billy Dewett, Single Member District Six, I second the motion that Tommy Hebert just read.
Thank you, Billy. Now, we take another vote on that. All in favor, say aye. There are none opposed, so that motion passes seven-zero for the second time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That's a strong support. We will now move in to the consent agenda. Do I have any items that council would like to pull off of the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, Billy Dewett, Single Member District Six, I would like to pull item L.
Item L.
Mayor, Harry Thomas, Single Member District Three, I'd like to pull item J.
Item J. Do I have any other items to be pulled?
Yes, Mayor. Lucy Gonzalez, Single Member District Four, I'd like to pull item O.
Item O. Any other items? With no other items, then I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item J, L, and O.
Harry Thomas, Single Member District Three, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of J, L, and O.
Thank you, Harry. May I have a second?
Billy Dewett, Single Member District Six, I second the motion.
Thank you, Billy. All of those in favor of passing the consent agenda with the exception of J, L, and O, please say aye.
Aye.
With no one opposed, that consent agenda is approved by seven-zero vote, and we will now go into item J. Item J is consider awarding FS-06-20 passenger cars to Jim Bass Ford, San Angelo, Texas in the amount of 144,900 for the purchase of seven units and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Ryan, you're on, I believe, so. Harry, did you pull that item?
I did.
Would you please ask Ryan any questions that you have concerning that item?
Certainly. I want to make sure that we support local businesses, but I also want to make sure that we're using citizens' tax dollars in the best way we can. And I notice there's a difference of about $24,000 here. I'd like Ryan to kind of just tell us why we're going with the more expensive vendor.
Good morning, Council. Ryan Kramer, Fleet Services here. Yes, sir, the difference between these two, and just for those that might not be able to see it, we had two bids offered to us, one from Jim Bass Ford for a Nissan Altima and one from Caldwell Country Chevrolet out of Caldwell for a Chevy Malibu. In essence, both of these vehicles are similar except for a few specifications that do make a difference to us. One of the specifications offered by the Caldwell Country bid has an engine size that is not appropriate for our application, and they are also 90 to 120 days out. So the Nissan Ultimas offered by Jim Bass Ford are also in stock. So not only do we get to implement these vehicles much quicker, but they actually meet our specifications as written.
Thank you, Ryan. I move to approve this item as presented.
Thank you, Mary. And do I have a second?
Mayor, Tommy Hebert, Single Member District One, I second.
Thank you, Tommy. With that, may we take a vote. All in favor, say aye. None opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. We will now move to item L, consider approving an agreement with HUD in the amount of 179,670 to fund a rapid rehousing for the homeless program and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Billy, I think you pulled this item. Would you go ahead with your questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Bob. How are you?
Good morning. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Bob, could you speak to this program and give us some idea of what the specifics are? How will this program work in the city of San Angelo?
Certainly. Bob Salles, Neighborhood and Family Services Director. This grant is to assist homeless individuals and families with not only finding permanent housing, but to provide case management for each client to help them navigate the obstacles that have kept them homeless. The city will be the grant managers, and the public housing authority, as a sub-recipient, will manage the day-to-day operations of the program, and it will include tenant-based rental assistance and overseeing the case management. The program will assist up to 30 families per year, which is about a little less than half of our homeless population according to our annual point-in-time count. And we're hoping that our city homeless will take advantage of the opportunity.
Okay, now, Bob, I know that in the past, when you've made presentations to the council, that you have pointed out that we have maybe 28 to 30 homeless people that want to remain homeless. For whatever reason, they're not receptive to getting housing. Are we making any kind of arrangements? You know, when it gets extremely cold or something is going on? Are we using any of this money to try to establish something similar to what we had with the Salvation Army that we no longer have? Are we doing anything like that?
We do. We do have some programs. For example, during the cold period of the year, we have out of the cold program, which basically, if the weather hits below 35, we get hotels for them for a period of time until it warms up a little bit. So we have that program in place. Excuse me. We also have a program where we will help individuals with homeless vouchers to get into permanent housing as well. So this program is going to add to the current rapid rehousing program that we established a couple of years back. So we've actually helped about 40 families or so, homeless families and individuals, get into permanent housing. So we do have some programs.
Okay, and you know, I get calls, and I'm sure maybe some of the other council members, that there are a couple of areas, you know, within the city where the homeless seem to like to stay. And those areas, just to be frank, are, you know, sometimes are really trashy-looking areas, Bob. Is there anything we can do to try to help manage that at all?
Yes, ma'am, you know, we have an ordinance that allows the city to, I won't say relocate, but assist individuals to relocate from certain areas if they're public, if they're public right-of-ways. We've kind of been reluctant to enforce that because of the lack of housing. However, with this program, combined with the current rapid housing, rapid rehousing program we have in place, the numbers get a bit higher, we provide, which gives us more rooms and more beds for homeless, so we may be able to start enforcing a little bit of that ordinance. So, yeah.
I want to join Billy and I'm sure other council members, but I'm getting regular phone calls and emails from people very concerned, particularly about the, under the Chadburn Street Bridge on Seventh. Not only the number of people there, but the following things that are happening, the trash is building up disgustingly. I've seen trash bags at that area that have not been removed in over a week. I have had citizens complain about peeing, about people, I meant to say people, urinating in public, drinking in public. At one point, a prostitute offering services there as well. We cannot continue to let that area embarrass our citizens and our city, so we need some action quickly on dealing with the situation there. I don't believe it's the only area, but it is a very visible area, and we cannot, first of all, it's not legal to be there offering services from a prostitute, it's not legal to be urinating in public, and it's not legal for them to be drinking, urinating in public there, so there's many offenses on many levels here, and we need to be doing something here. This is not okay. There's a lot of laws that would allow us to deal with those issues, and we need to do that.
Mayor, Harry Thomas, single member District three, I happen to agree with you, I have visited with the chief on this, of course, it is on text dot property, and the only problem is, is the less you physically see those people doing that, the chief then is not taking third-party information, so we really got to figure out a way that we can move these people to more permanent housing. The unfortunate thing is, is these, some of these individuals don't do anything except drink and urinate all day. I mean, it's just, it's, it's really tough, and it's, you know, it's right there in the heart of the city, within just blocks of, of where we, we do business all the time. We really need to see if there's a way we can get this done.
Well, and the trash can't stay there for weeks on end. Whoever is responsible for picking up those trash bags, I mean, somebody put the trash in black plastic bags, so someone's accumulated it, and now the black plastic bags are just sitting there for days. How is that happening? I mean, this issue's got to be dealt with.
Mayor?
We can make excuses all day long about why we can't do anything, but we got to figure out a way to get to doing something.
Mayor?
Yes, Daniel.
Daniel Von So, City Manager. I know the text odd, that does provide bags for trash, and they do pick that up, that's going to be a better coordinated effort, but I think what Bob mentioned a while ago, with the, the housing now that is available, we do have enough stock for the police department to actually go out there and start asking individuals to move to different locations, so that, I think in itself, will help the situation, and we should have actually a pretty quick response on that. So, I don't, I don't perceive that being an issue too much longer, Mayor, and we'll jump on that immediately, we just want to make sure that we get this program passed moving forward.
I mean, people, citizens are very irritated, they're very angry, they don't understand the situation, and nor do I, when we allow the trash to build up, it's disgusting, and people drive by it, and you can't drive by and take a video all at the same time, you know, so we need to sit somebody on that corner from a police officer to watch and take note of what's happening, but let's do it. We can't ignore it.
Absolutely, we'll get a better coordinator on that with the police department, text odd as well, Mayor, but we'll get that cleared up, cleared up.
Thank you.
All right, you know, I appreciate all the comments that have been made, because I know that I spoke with the chief, well, Chief Howard, I believe, and, you know, he took care of it immediately, or saw that it got taken care of immediately, but it doesn't last. I mean, within a couple of days, they were back with the sleeping mats, with the lawn chairs, you know, with beer bottles lining the street curb, and so, I just appreciate any attention that we can give this matter, so if there are no more comments or questions, Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item L on our consent agenda.
Thank you, Billy, do I have a second?
Lucy Gonzalez, single member District four, second the motion.
Thank you, Lucy. With that, we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven zero. We will move into item O. Item O is consider resolution authorizing an amendment to the city of San Angel budget policy fee schedule removing animal adoption-related fees, and Lucy, I believe you pulled this one?
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted Tina to explain to the public what is going on in this, in this one issue, this one item.
Yes, ma'am, these are fees that are no longer charged by the city, instead they're being charged by the third-party vendor, and so we are pulling them out of our fee policy since we do not charge the fees any longer. I know Morgan's on the line, she's prepared to speak to, you know, how that works and why the vendor is now charging those fees in lieu of the city.
Morgan, would you go ahead and explain?
Yes, Morgan Chugwin, Assistant Director of Neighborhood and Family Services. We did take the new third-party vendor contract to the city council for consideration August 18th, 2020, and as part of NFS oh two twenty was the allocation to, I'm sorry, the assignment to the third-party vendor, which was selected as Concho Valley Paws, to set and levy the appropriate adoption fees for cats and dogs, the, and also any associated expenses such as spay neuter and rabies vaccine and microchip would also be taken on by that vendor, so it's a net impact of zero to the city, we no longer have that cash inflow, but we also no longer have the associated expenses, and those will instead be assigned to the vendor to manage.
Okay, that's what I needed you to explain to the public, thank you, Morgan.
I move to approve as presented, Mayor. Lucy has moved to approve item O, is there a second for item O?
Single member District six, I second that motion.
Thank you very much, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven zero. That concludes the consent agenda, and we will now move on to our regular agenda. We will start with item A, consideration of matters related to request for proposal HR dash oh two dash two oh, one, discussion of proposals submitted for post 65 retiree benefits, and two, consideration of selecting benefit provider and authorizing the city manager to negotiate contracts and execute all related documents. The presentation will be made by Holmes Murphy Consultant Jason Newman and Assistant Director of Human Resources Veronica Sanchez.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, City Manager, I'm Veronica Sanchez. And, good morning, I'm Veronica Sanchez, Assistant HR Director for the city. So, what we have for you today is the results of a request for proposal for the over 65 retiree benefit. And, we went out or sent this RFP out to see if we could realize some savings with this benefit. If you do not have any initial questions for me, Jason with Holmes Murphy is going to go through the presentation.
Let's go ahead with the presentation, and then perhaps we'll have questions.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me and see me okay?
We can, Jason, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, it's, it's good to be here with you today, thank you for your time. As Veronica mentioned, we have worked with them in the HR department, but also purchasing to send out an RFP for benefits for the over 65 retiree benefits, so I'm just going to share my screen. And I'll just go through the, the presentation here. This is just a quick overview of, of the current situation that you have with your post 65 retiree benefits, the current total annual cost is about 1.2 million, this includes the contributions from both the city as well as the members. We got best and final quotes from two organizations, one called Retiree First, one called Group Administrative Concepts, they are third-party concierge organizations, I'll go into a little bit more detail about specifically what those companies do, but we got quotes from Aetna, which is your incumbent current provider for, current vendor for your post 65 retiree benefits, Humana, Hartford, and UHC. This slide just shows the quotes we received from Retiree First, from Aetna, Humana, UHC, and Hartford. This just shows the plan design, we essentially got quotes that mirror your current plan. Aetna, as their, as your current carrier, also provided an alternate option, a lower-cost option, with some higher out-of-pocket charges for members, you can see that on the third column there, we're under Aetna alternate. Otherwise, the carriers just quoted exactly what your plan now has. These are the benefits from Group Administrative Concepts, all of their carriers basically quoted the same plan design that you currently have, so no, no real difference here. They had a Hartford there, second from the, from the right, it offers some enhanced benefits for hearing and vision, but otherwise, these are exactly the same as what you currently have. These are pharmacy benefits, again, we went out and asked for exactly what you have right now, and so everybody matched that current plan design. These are the ones from Retiree First, and these are the ones from GAC, again, matched your current plan exactly. These are the overall costs comparison that we received from Retiree First. Retiree First quoted mostly Medicare Advantage plans, which are the same as your current plan that you have right now, they also quoted one Medicare Supplement Plan, which is what you see on the far right, those rates, those plans are generally higher cost than the Medicare Advantage Plans. You see, the lowest cost overall was Humana, right there in the middle, at a 34.8% decrease from your current plan, and then the UHC, the one thing that's different there about the UHC plan is that they were the one vendor that offered a two-year rate guarantee, so you would have no increase next year if you went with their plan, it would be the same. The cost comparisons for GAC, they quoted mostly Medicare Supplements, again, those are higher cost, so you see the increases there at the bottom. They did quote one Humana Medicare Advantage Plan, and that is a decrease from your current, but it's not as low as some of the ones we received from Retiree First. Just some details, like I mentioned earlier, about what these organizations provide, they're essentially, like I said, third-party concierge services, they work with HR as well as the, whatever carrier you would go with to implement a new plan, or if you stayed with Aetna just to get the renewal process started. They conduct meetings, kickoff meetings with members, and they can even do one-on-one calls, this is Retiree First, by the way. They can do one-on-one calls directly with members and talk about if there are any plan changes, answer any questions they have about their benefits, things like that. As the year goes on, they can actually supr, so, support new hires when they come on, or not new hires, but new members, when they come onto the plan and assist them with enrollment. They can do direct billing to members, they can help out the HR department with all of their billing issues as well. Pretty much a day-to-day, one-point-of-contact service provider for not only the HR department, but also members, so you can see there, they even help out with things like lost ID cards and replacements and things like that, and then they could also work with, directly with providers and pharmacies to assist members as well. Group Administrative Concepts does a lot of the same type of services, they, they're very hands-on when it comes to member services and assisting members through enrollment, and if they have any issues throughout the planning year, and they can also do a lot of specific member billing services as well. So, two very similar type of organizations. So, looking at what we got in terms of responses to the RFP, the, the most competitive rate along with that two-year rate guarantee was through UHC, so when we spoke with Human Resources and discussed the options, UHC was not the lowest rate, but they were very close to Humana, and UHC was the only one that offered the two-year rate guarantee. So, what we would recommend council to approve is moving that benefit over to UHC, starting 1121, and then move the administration over to Retiree First, they were the ones to secure those, those two-year rate guarantee, and then, that we would work with Retiree First and UHC, as well as the city, to begin implementation, implementation of those benefits.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Do I have questions for Jason from council members?
Mayor, Billy Dewett, single member District six, and Jason, the two years would start January 1st, 2021, and go through December 31st, 2022?
Correct.
Thank you.
That's right.
Mayor, Tommy Hebert.
Yes, Tommy.
Good morning, Jason. I know sometimes Medicare Advantage in our area can have some network access, let's just say, issues, I would assume and hope that you all vetted carefully that there is good network access for all the members under this particular recommendation, United Healthcare, so plenty, plenty of providers, adequate providers for our membership.
Yes, you should not see any deficiencies in terms of network or provider availability. The one thing that you have with Medicare Advantage Plans at times is, even if you have a provider that takes Medicare patients, they might have had a poor experience dealing with United Healthcare or Humana or any one of these carriers, and so they will refuse to see a patient because of that, but that's very, very, very rare, so we don't expect any, any network or provider drop-off at all with this change.
If I could also add that we did the transition last year, so January 1st, 2020, was from a Medicare Supplement to a Medicare Advantage Plan, we did run into some of those issues, there weren't very many, but Aetna was really good about communicating with those providers to explain what Medicare Advantage was, and obviously make them feel comfortable that, you know, that those claims would be covered, so we did transition some providers to allowing them to accept Medicare Advantage Plan, so we, we have gone through those hurdles and we're, we're pretty much set with the providers that the over 65 retirees utilize.
Yeah, I can imagine, you know, there were some bumps in the road going from Supplement to Medicare Advantage, so, yeah, this, this should be an easier transition.
I'll also, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm through.
Oh, I just wanted to also add that that's one of the reasons, you know, we've had some bumps in the road, like you said, for this past year with Aetna, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to bring Retiree First on, because they can, like I said, they'll be really hands-on with handling issues with members, if they have a provider, let's say, who is accepting Medicare patients, but for whatever reason is not interested in working with UHC, they can intervene there and, and help out to kind of make that, to smooth that over.
Good.
Go ahead, Tommy.
I, I would make a motion to approve the staff and Holmes Murphy recommend- Uh, I, I would make a motion to approve uh the staff and uh Holmes-Murphy recommendation as, as presented here.
Thank you, Tommy. Second, yes, Lucy?
I had a quick question for either Jason or uh, I just wanted to know, how many members do we have?
We have about three hundred and eleven over sixty-five members, um, and let me see, um, two hundred and ninety-one of them actually are on the health plan, on the medical plans.
Thank you.
Is that a second as well, Lucy?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Uh, may I have a, a vote? All in favor of approving item seven A, say aye. With none opposed, that motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Veronica. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move into item B, Public Hearing and First Reading of an Ordinance Revising Chapter Two, Article two-point-oh-seven of the San Angelo Code of Ordinances to Add a Provision for Board and Commission Code of Conduct made by City Attorney Teresa James. Teresa, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor. Um, this item is um filling a hole that's in our process right now. There's a code of conduct for employees. There's a code of conduct for elected officials, but we don't have a code of conduct for board members. So essentially, what this item is doing is it's taking the code of conduct that applies to city council members and applying it to members of all of our boards and commissions. Um, the violations, for violations, there can be disciplinary action taken. That can be individual counseling. It can be sanctions, formal sanctions by the council, or it can be removal from the board.
All right. Do I have questions for Teresa on item B?
Harry Thomas, Single Member District Three, move to approve.
Thank you, Harry. Is there a second? Lane Carter seconded that motion. May I have a vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 With none opposed, motion passes seven zero. We will mo- move into item C, which is First Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance Rezoning Property from the Light Manufacturing Zoning District to the General Commercial Zoning District, being seven-point-oh-one acres located at nineteen-oh-one dash twenty-twenty-three and twenty-one-oh-five Knickerbocker Road. John, you're on.
Thank you, uh, John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. I assume you're all seeing my PowerPoint presentation.
Not yet. There we go.
Uh, as you mentioned, this is on Knickerbocker, uh, the shopping center there with the bowling alley and a number of retail and restaurants. You'll see on the map in just a second, this area is zoned light manufacturing. Um, it is about seven acres. And so you can see on this map, this whole corridor was zoned industrial at some point in the past. My guess is that's because of the presence of the railroad.
You keep breaking up, John. I need you to stay closer to your uh microphone.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, this area was zoned industrial at some point in the past, likely because uh of its presence near the railroad. Uh, the idea was maybe that that would become an industrial area, but over time, it's developed into a commercial area. And you can see the long-range plan for the city is for that to be commercial, and so this zoning really just reflects that. Uh, there's some business changeover happening in that uh shopping center, a- and the commercial zoning is necessary for them to move forward with that. Uh, here are just a few pictures uh of that shopping center uh there on Knickerbocker. Uh, this is, on the right is a picture of one of the uh facilities, uh, used to be Zentner's Daughter uh is being converted into partly a restaurant and part of furniture store. And so again, that, this rezoning is necessary to allow those to move forward. Uh, we did send out our notifications, received one in favor, none in opposition. Uh, as I mentioned, it is an existing retail corridor, so this rezoning does make a lot of sense for all of the existing uses in that area, not just these new proposed uses. Uh, there are no non-conforming manufacturing uses that would be affected. Uh, staff does recommend approval, uh, as did the Planning Commission unanimously. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have any questions from council for John James?
No questions, but Lane, this is Lane Carter. I'll uh move to approve as presented.
Thank you, Lane. Do I have a second?
Tommy Hebert, Single Member District One, I'll second.
Tommy Hebert seconds it, and with that, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 None opposed, motion passes seven zero. We will move into item D, which is First Reading and Public Hearing of Ordinances Approving One Case CP-two-oh-dash-oh-four, An Amendment to the City of San Angelo Comprehensive Plan, Changing Certain Lands From the Neighborhood Center Future and Land Use to Industrial Future and Land Use Located at twelve-oh-nine, twelve-thirteen, and twelve-seventeen South Oak Street. And two, Case Z-two-oh-dash-one-oh, A Rezoning From the General Commercial Zoning District to the Light Manufacturing Zoning District Located at twelve-oh-nine, twelve-thirteen, and twelve-seventeen South Oak Street. John, you're on again.
Okay, are you still seeing my presentation? Uh, it looks like you're just getting away on mine.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Um, this is on South Oak Street, and you'll see a zoom out of this in a, in a minute, but uh this is the area where there's a current use that is um got an approval years ago, and they want to expand onto adjacent properties. Uh, so the current use is on the southernmost lot, and they want to expand uh including the two lots to the north. As you can see here on the right, the uh long-range plan for this area is for Neighborhood Center. And basically, what that means is it's intended to be a lower-intensity uh commercial area. And so uh the idea is that more intensive uses would go away over time. Uh, obviously, those in existence uh would be allowed to continue, uh, but the hope from the plan is that those would not expand and new ones would not come in. Uh, the current zoning is general commercial, uh, which also does not allow that industrial manufacturing use. Uh, this is a little bit larger, uh, zoom out of the area, and again, as you can see, that entire corridor of South Oaks from Washington uh down to Avenue L has been designated in the plan as Neighborhood Center. Uh, again, a lower-intensity uh use, uses are the idea for that.
Is that, it does the plan include removing that house that's in really terrible, terrible shape?
Well, the hope is that those uses would transition over time, but again, to more retail and lighter commercial-type uses rather than manufacturing-type uses. And, and again, one of the items before you is a comprehensive plan amendment, so uh you can change that long-term plan. But one of the reasons for the staff's recommendation for uh denial of this is this adopted plan that City Council has approved uh that indicates that this area should transition away from those manufacturing uses. Uh, but you do have the ability to modify that with this action. Uh, you can see the subject property there, the oning company on the picture on the left, uh, and then some pictures of surrounding area. There's a uh home to the south and then uh commercial property. So this, this is an area that's a mixture of homes, commercial, uh, even some manufacturing uh or heavy commercial-type uses uh like the, the request here in this case.
Well, go back to that slide. That house in the, on the right, that picture, there, I'm quite, there's no one living in that house, is there?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure. It, it doesn't appear to be, but, but sometimes that can be deceiving, but I believe this is one of the properties that the applicant has either purchased or is preparing to purchase for their expansion, so that if they're uh available in the public hearing, they may be able to answer that.
Okay.
Uh, again, another couple of pictures of a, a residence west of the property and then some more commercial in the area. Uh, and again, another residence uh as well as commercial. So again, this is a mixed, mixed-use area. Uh, one of the concerns with some of the manufacturing, and my suspicion is why it was planned for more light commercial, is the presence of all of those homes uh intermixed with this commercial. Uh, again, a couple more examples. I will mention, looking at these pictures, uh, one of the things that the applicant may mention is that uh they do have some outdoor storage of materials right now, a- and their plan is to enclose all of that into a building. So um while it, it isn't necessarily the most appropriate use right next to residential, uh, the fact that they are intending to enclose it in an enclosed building uh might actually help uh address some of the possible negative impacts of that. Again, one more commercial use down the street. Uh, we did send out our notices to twenty properties in the surrounding area. We did not receive any responses, uh, either in favor or in opposition. A little bit of background, I'm going to go through this quickly, but if you have questions, uh, this use was established in nineteen-seventy-seven uh when there was a zone change to um a, a commercial district, the, the general commercial. Uh, at that time, it was for vehicle sales, and then in nineteen-eighty-six, a zone changed to light manufacturing. Similar to what's being requested today was actually denied, but at the same time, the city council approved a special permit for this specific uh manufacturing use, so it didn't allow the broader, you know, any manufacturing, but it did give a special permit for this particular use. Unfortunately, that special permit is not something that's in a, uh, an allowable thing in our ordinance now, so you, you're faced with the choice of either zoning to manufacturing, which would allow any manufacturing, or not rezoning. Uh, you don't really have that option for a special permit to allow this particular use to expand. The property is currently in violation of the special permit that was approved in the nineteen-eighties. It did not allow any outdoor storage, uh, but this particular user is currently, has a, a lot of outdoor storage uh on the property. A- as I mentioned earlier, their proposal to expand would include enclosing all of that, what is now outdoor storage inside a building. Uh, one of the things we look at is whether it's consistent with the zoning ordinance. Again, the proposed expansion is not an allowed use in the current zoning, uh, which is what's requiring this rezoning proposal to light manufacturing. Uh, but the zoning ordinance does say it tries to prevent and minimize incompatibilities, and so one of the things we look at is uh is this type of manufacturing use appropriate near, with nearby homes? Community need, there is a community need for manufacturing. The, the question in this case is, uh, is this the right area for this type of use to expand? Uh, given that the surrounding area is mostly residential and commercial. Um, it is not currently compatible with the future land use plant, plan. Again, the, the long-term plan for this area has been designated as commercial and particularly lighter commercial, uh, but again, you, you have the ability to change that. Uh, but again, that's one of the reasons for staff's recommendation for denial, is that at least at some point in the past, the city council had determined this area uh to be desirable for a transition away from this type of manufacturing. Um, I, I won't read all of these. Again, this is just emphasizing the fact that there are residential uses in the area, and so there is a concern uh if manufacturing were to go in uh with nearby residences. This particular use, as I mentioned, is allowed on the property through a special permit that was issued in nineteen-eighty-six, but at the same time, the light manufacturing zoning was denied. Uh, the long-term plan is for commercial, not industrial. Uh, and staff did not see any substantial changes in the area that would warrant changing uh that future plan for the area. So staff does recommend denial of both the change to the comprehensive plan and the rezoning, uh, but the Planning Commission by five-one vote did recommend approval of these changes. Uh, so what comes to you is a formal recommendation from the Planning Commission for approval.
Well, I, yeah, I approve. I mean, I think that, that their request is, is valid. I drove that area yesterday, and I can't imagine that making onings is industrial. Um, it's light manufacturing at best. Um, I, I mean, I drove around that area, and I look at what they want to do uh with the properties next to it, would be an improvement to that area, including taking down that house that is in disaster shape. Um, I support the Planning Commission's recommended approval of these changes. Harry, what do you think?
Well, I'd, I'd like to hear uh from John's perspective, what the Planning Commission was, was thinking when they approved these changes. I agree, Mayor. Uh, I, you know, there's, there's an identical business right across the street. Uh, A-one Fabrication does the exact same thing as what this particular business does. I think if, if, if they were able to expand, they would clean up three properties, and I think overall that particular part of Oak Street would look much better if they were able to do it. I'm just trying to think of how the Planning Commission looked at this uh as they approved these particular changes. John, can you?
Sure, yeah, and I think basically their comments and thoughts were similar to the mayor's and, and yours, Councilman Thomas, that that this is an existing business. Um, you know, if this were undeveloped properties or if these were homes, uh, maybe putting in a brand-new manufacturing like this might not be appropriate, but because they're already there and want to expand and clean up properties, uh, I think that was the feeling of the Planning Commission. Uh, and I think, I guess, i- if you d- decide to approve this, I think one of the questions staff would have is, um, are you looking at this because it's simply an expansion of an existing? Uh, or is the idea that that type of use is generally appropriate for that whole corridor? Uh, and, and so that would be something that would help us in terms of future uh businesses in this same area. Uh, if, if you're really accommodating an existing use, but wouldn't necessarily want to see something similar, or if you're generally okay with this along that hu- uh whole Oak Street corridor.
Well, in my opinion, the idea that it's going to continue to be residential development is not correct. It is going to continue to be uh commercial development. I mean, you can take a look at, there's housing developments happening. They're not happening on South Oak Street in that area there. It looks like it's totally going to commer- um, to commercial development, light manufacturing. I believe if you take a look at what's happening, it's not housing there. It is commercial, light manufacturing. That's what's happening.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Tommy.
Uh, Tommy Hebert, Single Member District One. John, um, is there a way so that we didn't make the entire area s- uh, open it up to light manufacturing, but leave it as the general commercial? But to a- allow this one business, since we don't have special permits anymore, could we approve like a planned development? What, what could we do today to assist this business so they could expand yet not um change the comprehensive plan or rezone this to light manufacturing? What options do we have there?
Well, really, there's no o- option other than rezoning as is requested, but the specific rezoning that's before you is just for those three properties. So it doesn't necessarily set a precedent for the larger area, uh, and so if another business down the street came in for this, they would have to come back to you with the same request, and you could, you could use this as a precedent to approve them, or you could deny them if their circumstances were different. So uh it is an individualized determination just for this property uh that you could, you could hold off l- longer, you know, bigger-picture discussions for a later day.
Okay. Uh, you know, I could support something like that, rather than, that, you know, a, a light manufacturing could have an impact on those homes that are, are um, you know, immediately adjacent to um this particular business and in the area as well. So, you know, I, I could, I could support something like changing just this to the light manufacturing, just to allow this business to, to grow their business.
Thank you, Tommy. Um, Harry, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, uh, I'd make a motion to approve these particular changes uh along with what the Planning Commission did. So that means that we've got the comprehensive plan amendment uh and changing it to future land use designation from the Neighborhood Center to industrial.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Harry. Do I have a second? I'll make a motion. I'll make, I'll second that motion. Um, any, uh, at this point, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Tommy. I see no nos or no negatives, so we will um approve item D, seven zero. We'll mo- move on to item E, First Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance Amending the City of San Angelo's Master Thoroughfare Thoroughfare Plan Designating South Concho Drive, South Country Club Road, and Country Club Road from a Parkway to Major Collector Street, and we have Lance, uh, we have John James and Lance Arms Overstreet making the presentation today.
Uh, thank you. This is John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. I'll start this one off, but then Lance may add some uh when I'm done. I'll just give a brief overview. Uh, this is an amendment to the Thoroughfare Plan, which is basically our long-range transportation plan. Uh, and you can see on the map here in gray uh are the three streets. Uh, there's South Concho Drive, which comes down uh and then turns into uh South Country Club Road and then turns to and then turns to Country Club Road. As mentioned, the Country Club Road within the city limits is already designated a collector, but the portion you see here is designated a Parkway. And I'll describe the differences, what that means in a second. Just our normal map showing the zoning and future land use in the area, largely, almost exclusively residential. The anticipation is with the Lake Nazareth Sewer Project that that may spur additional development in this area. If that happens, this road will need to accommodate more traffic, and so the design of that road will be appropriate for that. The Parkway designation-
John, could you speak up? We're having a hard time hearing.
I'm sorry. The Parkway designation requires a slightly smaller roadway and roadway than Collector Street designation would. And so by redesignating this as a collector, over the long term, will be better able to accommodate as future growth occurs in that area. I should add that this is not a plan to go out and improve that area. It's not a CIP project. It's just simply changing the plan so that as improvements are made in the future, or as development happens adjacent to that road, that it's built to the standard of a collector rather than a Parkway. We did send 130 notices out to all of the property owners along the four-and-a-half-mile stretch of this roadway. We did receive a number of phone calls. About two-thirds of the 50 phone calls we got were in opposition. About a third were in favor. We also received 12 letters in opposition and seven letters in favor. So a mixture, you received copies of the comments that were sent in. Many of them were really just about traffic and not wanting to see increased traffic. I think part of the way we would answer that concern is that if the development occurs in this area, the traffic is going to increase anyway. If that's the case, we really need to have the road designed to accommodate that traffic, or we may have other problems anyway. Staff does recommend approval of the change, and the planning commission also unanimously recommended approval. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lance if he has anything to add.
Morning, Council. Lance Overstreet, Engineering Services. I do have a slight presentation that might be able to answer some of the questions for you guys that have kind of come up related to this. Some of the things that we have been looking at is what the possibility is going to be long-term for this roadway. And some of the things that we have been looking at is the comments that have largely been related to, how is the right-of-way, if there's going to be any other property acquisitions? And one thing that is also spurring this is that we currently have an adequate amount of right-of-way in the largest portions of those areas. And so it's not going to necessarily need to have any additional right-of-way acquisitions for the houses and the lots that are currently plotted. We actually have 80 to 100-foot of right-of-way throughout that corridor. In the presentation that I'm sharing, you'll see the areas that are kind of that tan or that yellow-colored. Those are city-owned, and so in areas where we may be a little bit tight on right-of-way, it actually abuts currently city-owned properties. And so that is a benefit, because we will not necessarily need to have any right-of-way acquisitions for the homes that are currently there, which was one of the oppositions that a lot of individuals had. One of the things that's kind of spurring this is that, as you guys well know, we kind of have a moratorium on development out in that area right now because of the trunk main. One thing that we are seeing is that there is roughly over, there is really over 5,000 developable acres out in that area at the tip of the lake. And it could represent as many as 20,000 homes if it were to be developed. Any of those smaller adjacent ones that are in the 30-acre, 90-acre, we could very easily see a couple hundred homes actually develop into that area, which would actually mean at an average of two cars per home, you could easily have 200 to 500 more cars hit that area just as soon as that sewer trunk main and that moratorium is through. Some of the things that we're also looking at, in terms of all of that, is that currently there is already water and sewer infrastructure to that area. And so when we were looking at this, we were asking ourselves, would it make more sense for these developments to come on from Knickerbocker going north? Or would it make more sense for these developments to come from Concho Drive and move south? And because there is already water infrastructure right there on Concho Drive, anyone who wanted to develop off of Knickerbocker would actually have to extend a water main one to two miles around the airport, and then also to figure out how to loop that in, because that would be such a long extension. And so it makes more sense that that development would come from the Concho Drive area. We also too have sewer right there in that area as well, that is ready to be connected to as the moratorium is passed on. And then the other thing we looked at too is just tried to figure out what people's traffic patterns would be. Would they take the Concho Drive area, or would they, you know, take the longer route through South Country Club Road? And so we ran some scenarios that showed that it's a shorter distance, both distance and time-wise, to kind of that same location. And so, you know, that's some of the things that we looked at as well. Additionally, there is a pedestrian plan that calls for pathways for both pedestrian and bike that's been approved. And having the larger right-of-way would allow us to secure those areas, to be able to accommodate that as well. Whereas if we go with a Parkway or a local road, it would be much more impacted in that area of trying to fit those things in. And so there's several different things that kind of prompted all of this, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'm going to start with Tommy Hebert. I think that's in your district, so you might have some comments or questions or citizen input.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it is in my district. Lance and John have both answered the questions that I had made note of to ask. What I would offer as comment for the discussion is, you know, this council has been good, in my opinion, at doing our very best to plan for future growth of our city and our community. To me, this is a part of that. Some of you, or maybe all of you, remember, we had a case back down Grand Canal Road where a guy wanted to expand, but because of some prior actions by a city council, not us, we, you know, we had some problems we had to deal with, and that was because it was not planned for properly prior to it coming to us. So to me, this gives our planning folks the opportunity to help this area develop in an orderly and reasonable fashion. So at an appropriate time, Mayor, I will make a motion, but I'll leave it open for discussion until it's appropriate to make a motion.
Okay, Tommy. I'll find out if there's other questions or comments from council at this point. Do I have any? Oh, yes, Tom.
Yeah, Tom Thompson, single-member District Two. Lance, my question, would this not make these roads merit the best? I mean, in improvement upon what they have, and in the future, put out the best possible roads we could actually have out there for this community?
Yes, it would. The current road is really functioning as a collector already. It's already picking up the subdivision, a couple of subdivisions, and so it is already kind of overintegrated with how it's constructed. What this would allow us to do is it would give us the flexibility to expand that road as we see that development occurring. And then also too, it would allow those subdivisions, as they're coming online, to partner for a portion of that as it's being constructed. One of the things that we've also been challenged with is, as a Parkway, and with the very limited definition of what Parkway is in the current ordinance, is it's difficult for us to actually plan in a capital improvement project what the needs would be for a Parkway, because of the fact that the standard is not defined very well. And so by actually defining it as a collector, we have a standard that we can go by, we have cross-sections to go by, we can look at how the bridge and water crossings are. It really actually helps us to better plan for the long-term of what it can potentially be, and then phase that in as that development occurs.
Good. That's good, Lance. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Elaine Carter?
Yes, ma'am. May I have a question? John, with this being a major thoroughfare, would that have any effect on the neighboring property that's in the area of the 10, 15-year to 20-year annexation plan out there in the county?
John, we can't hear you.
All right, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it wouldn't really make a difference in terms of the annexation or the development of the area. The same rules that would apply inside and outside the city limits in terms of thoroughfares and street development. So it really wouldn't make a difference in terms of if that was your question.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it would kind of, almost, if something was on the 20-year plan, if it off of Grand Canal and Country Club Road, would that have an effect on us re-looking at that and bringing it in closer to town?
You know, it could, but largely, our annexations are done at the request of property owners as they develop. And so, you know, in fact, we have an application for an annexation right now that's in our 10-to-15-year plan for annexation. So it really largely depends on the development and the developer-owner of the property of when it comes out.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, so Tommy, you want to go ahead and officially make that motion?
Yes, ma'am. I would move we approve item E as presented by Mr. James and Mr. Overstreet.
And a second by Tom Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion being approved, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Motion passes 7-0. We'll move on to item F, the last item on the regular agenda, which is as follows. First reading of public hearing of ordinance amending Chapter 12, Article 3, Section 501 of the City of San Angelo zoning ordinance to allow for an approval process for manufactured homes to be replaced on residential zone properties meeting state standards. John?
Thank you. This is John James, again, Director of Planning and Development Services. As you mentioned, this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. It's really to clean up our ordinance based on recent changes in state law. The Texas Occupations Code requires that we allow a manufactured home to be replaced with a new one if certain conditions are met, including that it's newer and at least as large. Our current ordinance requires a special use approval to go to city council, and so the state law no longer allows that discretionary approval. It's, again, we have to allow one replacement, and so this cleans that up. It also requires that a mobile home, which is anything built before 1974, can be replaced with a manufactured home. And so this change to our ordinance reflects that as well. I won't read through this. I have the text of the ordinance change here in case there were questions about it. But staff does recommend approval of this change, as did the planning commission unanimously six out. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have questions from council? I think there was one question someone had that they have to replace with an equal size or greater, but cannot be replaced with a smaller.
That's right. And I should clarify that this only applies to manufactured homes when they're in a district that no longer allows manufactured homes. So if it's in a single-family zoning, for example, if it's in a zoning that allows manufactured homes, then this doesn't apply. They're just allowed, and they go through our normal process. This is really only affecting non-conforming manufactured homes that are no longer allowed in the district they're located. Under our current ordinance, those would have to come to you and ask permission to put in a replacement home. What this changes it to is, as long as it's newer and at least as large, then they are allowed by right to replace it. But you're right, if it's smaller, they can't do that. They have to follow the normal non-conforming rules.
And you're basically saying we're changing this also because the state law requires the same thing?
Correct. Right.
So we're just trying to make our ordinance match up with the state?
That's right. Our current ordinance is stricter than what the state allows, so this backs off our ordinance a little bit so that it's in line with the state.
Okay. Do I have questions for John James from any council member?
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Elaine.
John, you said a home of the same size. What if it's an older home, they don't make one exactly the same size as that? Is there something in the provision at state level that would provide for them to do a plus or minus, or 10% rule, or 20% rule? If it's comparable, or is it exactly 1,500 square feet to 1,500 square feet, or 1,500 to 1,495?
Yeah, the way it's worded, it says at least as large. And so I would read that to say, if it's even two square feet smaller, then it's not at least as large, and so would not be allowed.
Gotcha. Okay.
All right. Other questions from council members? With none, may I have a motion for approval?
Harry Thomas, single-member District Three. A move to approve is presented.
Thank you, Harry. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Second by Tommy Hebert. With all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. We will now move into a closed session. The executive session under provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551. Open Meeting, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. A, Section 551.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding (1) The Ford Ranch; (2) Advertising and Naming Rights Agreements; and B, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding (1) The Ford Ranch. With that, we will go out of this Zoom meeting and go into a closed session. With that, we will go out of this Zoom meeting and go into a closed session.
...
For those of you that get there, this is Harry. I can't start the video because it said the host has got me locked out.
Me too, Harry. It's Tommy. I'm here.
Thank you. We can hear you. Harry, can you hear us now?
I can, I can.
Tommy, are you on?
I got it.
Okay, good. Who am I lacking? Lane Carter, there you are. So I think we're complete, right? Yeah, we're good. Okay, we're all, we're back from closed session. So on nine on the regular agenda, it says follow-up and administrative issues. And so A is to consider items discussed in closed session. Tom Thompson, SMD two, would you like to make an announcement?
Yes, want to make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute all documents necessary for the sale of 2,830 acres of the Ford Ranch marketed as the Lightner Track to Neil Tinsley for no less than 1,400 per acre.
Is there a second? Lane Carter has seconded that motion. We will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 No one opposed, so that motion passes seven zero. We will now move into consideration of approving various board nominations. Would council like me to vote on each individual or as a whole?
As a whole.
Okay, we will take this as a whole. So they are as follows. Fourth Contra Museum Board, Lisa Marley, SMD two, to an unexpired term ending January 2022. Keith Sinangelo, Beautiful Page, Vincent, SMD two, to a first term ending September 2022. Planning Commission, Brittany Davis, Mayor Gunter, to an unexpired term ending January 2022. And Zoning Board of Adjustment, Donald Barnhart, SMD six, to an unexpired term ending January 2022. May I have a motion for approval of those four board positions?
Harry Thomas, Second Amendment District three, I move to approve.
Harry Dobbins, Single Member District three, I move to approve as presented.
Lane Carter was seconding that motion. So with that, may we have a vote of approval for those four board nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Those board nominations pass seven zero. We will move into discussion, consideration of city council meetings in November, December, and January 2021. So we, I have Julia, City Clerk, on for conversation on these dates. Julia?
Yes, Mayor. And I've looked at the calendar and the November dates, November 3rd and 17th do not conflict with any of the holidays. And Thanksgiving this year is November 26th, so we recommend leaving the November dates as they are. And for the December month, we typically have just one council meeting. And, and so we would suggest either moving that to December 8th or 15th, so that it's more in the middle of the month, which would not conflict with Christmas holidays.
I'd recommend the 15th, so it stays with either the first or third city council meeting, which citizens are generally attuned to, so we don't confuse everyone. So I would recommend the 15th of December.
And there is a possibility due to CARES funding deadlines that we might need another meeting later in the month, but I think the 15th really supports that as well.
Okay.
And then due to the one week preparation of the agenda and that following, because our typical January first meeting would be January the 5th. And that would be probably hard to schedule with holiday travels between the Christmas and New Year's Day. So we do recommend possibly moving the January dates to the 12th and the 26th if there's no opposition to that. And they're currently scheduled for January 5th and 19th.
I would rather we do the 12th and the 19th, so we don't totally mess up. Again, people believing the first and third Mondays or Tuesdays are when we meet, so I would recommend the 12th and the 19th. If, is there any opposition to that? Does anyone have any concerns about those dates that's just, we just discussed?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. So tendively, then that would be what we would do. October stays the same. November would move to the 17th of, November, I'm sorry, November would stay the same. December would change to the 15th of the month for the city council meeting, and then January would be the 12th and the 19th. Do we need a vote? All right. With that, those will be the future city council meeting dates. And now we will move into announcements of consideration of future agenda items. Are there any from any council member? Okay, with none, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Mayor Tommy Hebert, Single Member District one, move with adjourn.
Thank you. And a second for Tom Thompson.
Single Member District two.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.